We're opening the regular.
Regular meetings. All right, I'm opening the regular meeting. This is myself, I'm Howard. And.
What?
Joe Snyder. Madison Fixley. Jason Barrios.
We'll get that at some point.
John Matthews and Rick Green is here but not participating. Okay, this is an A and R. Going with. Going with. 256 Chapin Road. Okay, how was what you're gonna do?
Yeah, so the Hagerty's own the property through 56 and John's brother Jeff owned the bacon lot to our next door. And he's thinking about putting that on the market. And John realized that his part of his driveway was actually over the property line and the house was not 35 feet off the sideline. So they agreed that a small parcel shown here on is parcel A would be transferred from lap 2R to the Hagerty property at 256 to remedy that situation. Essentially what they're looking to accomplish.
Any questions from the board?
There's still plenty of frontage and area for both parcels.
Yeah, are you changing the frontage?
It looks like. 10 feet is coming out of 2R.
Any other questions? If not, I'll listen to a motion. I'll make a motion to.
One question.
Well, go ahead.
Driveways are not called. The entry, it looks like it's powered by.
For the entry in the driveway, it's probably 20.
Anything else? One, twice, I'll take the motion.
I think a motion to accept the application for endorsement of plan does not require approval in the NR for 256 Chapin Road. Mr. John J. and Christina S. Hagerty.
Your second? Which is made second and all is in favor?
Aye.
One, two, three, four, done?
Yeah.
Five. That's it.
Start signing.
Hopefully your next two hearings will go that quick.
Yeah. Set.
Thank you all very much.
Thanks. Take care.
You like those well.
That brings us into continuation of the meeting involving crossroads. I'm not close. I hope you two guys aren't as winded as you are. Okay, we've got some conditions. Members have something.
Three conditions for the, if we do vote. One would be, and we voted on, we voted on these conditions already, but I do believe it should be noted on permit. One is setback waivers, the west side at 50 feet, the north side at 40 feet, and the south and east sides to remain at 100. What minimum? The west side is 50 feet. The north side is 40. And that leaves south and east at 100.
So those can fly.
Yes, sir.
South and east.
Yes.
Okay.
And the second one would be accepting the site plan scale size as given. And the third one would be the water storage tank to cistern, not to be included in or on the plant.
Any discussion? I need, any of those three?
I do.
Go ahead.
We're gonna go back to the cistern. Say. But the question I have is. Per the bylaw.
It's done. I'm gonna ask you to speak up a little.
And since this requirement may weigh, anyway, that a sufficient water source exists on site, require protection. So we determined vote that it was really the topography that eliminated the use of the tank.
Right. And, and the chief saying it is.
Well, I'm, but the chief, he said that they wouldn't use it, I think, on a fire. But it could be used on a grass fire, I believe so. So the question remains. And really, is the topography, ledge and the soil conditions do not lend itself to installation of this tank?
And also the cap.
Well, the cap is the other, but I'm saying that basically is, you know, I mean, if we situated it somewhere beyond the cap, we'd still have to want ledge and possibly order conditions, so that would not involve 30,000 gallon tank.
Right.
Several.
We already voted that.
Um, did you have it as a vote?
Yeah, we had it as a vote. Not be required of it.
Okay. So. We're good with that.
Anything else, John?
Um, I asked for an inventory or how many 10-inch larger tall trees, but we never got that, I believe.
Yeah, the response, I mean, we went out there and, and, you know, there's a mix of 10-inch diameter trees, a lot of saplings. And I think the we did respond, but it was roughly like 50/50 between 10-inch diameter and greater and then, you know, saplings that you know, of a lesser diameter.
So you're saying that, I'm gonna say the majority of the of the trees that were caught are going to be of a smaller caliber, 10 inches, right?
I would.
I would say 50/50, but I'm gonna, you know, sure, into vote by numbers, sure.
Anything else, John?
So. Yeah, one of my, one of my conditions is that for environment standards, I would like to see, I'm gonna request that when we do a site remediation at the end, that we plant some larger.
What's the reason for that?
Well, in the by, in the bylaw, it says no more than 50% of land parts will utilize. It says the planning board shall have the authority to require new plants of trees or other plants to compensate for the removal of others as required by the project.
Yeah, that doesn't mean we have to do, just gives us the authority to do it, which is something I would.
Are you asking me?
Well, I'm just, no, I'm just telling you that that's not mandatory.
I think what he's doing is offering it up as a condition.
Yeah, I know.
Okay.
Yeah.
It's not mandatory, he's offering. So the question becomes, how many trees would that be, what are the potential costs?
Six, six inch diameter trees.
Pretty expensive.
Those are big trees.
3,000, 4,000 a pop.
And the difficulty is, the bigger the tree, you know, the bigger the tree, the less likely the success once it's planted because uprooting a large tree and trying to plant a large. I don't know what that sweet spot is to get you, you know, not saplings, because I can appreciate there are things that, the ground, they're only this tall and get something maybe a little more mature, but six inch, you know, diameter breast height is. That's like a 30-foot tree.
So that's a decent, yeah.
It's a decent sized tree.
Now, if I ask for a tree this big, I know what's gonna happen is you're gonna get in there and eat that.
So, so maybe land resistant. I don't, I don't know, obviously. I don't know much about maybe anything someone say, but specifically trees. So, you know, I don't know if, if there is a type of fear resistant, deciduous, it sounds like, not necessarily the coniferous trees that we could plant, you know, and I don't know if there is, I don't know, you know, the decommissioning or the remediation or replanting plant off the top of your head, but if there is some percentage of the area that you would like to see with that. Typically, we let these sites regenerate, which amazing how quickly they do regenerate, like native vegetation. Outside of obviously when we remove the panels, we reseed and, you know, things like that, but normally the site just revegetate over a five-year period. I suppose it's what the town wants, you know, because the landfill is the landfill, at least part that is. Right, right. So what's gonna happen on the balance of the lands in the future, you know, once the solar array leaves, does the town want trees? They want it scrubbed off or others, so what are they gonna put there? So I, just something to think about, because I think the balance of the land, like that shade management area, you're gonna keep it down, but that, that will start to. Yeah, regenerate.
Well, theoretically, in fairness. When you're, you know, when you go to the situation, I would say, you know, I'm not trying to kick the chair out of my board, but maybe there's a happy ending to what we plant. I mean, I don't know, what would you be thinking would be a reasonable alternative? I mean, I'm in a six inch tree, a big tree, it's really expensive.
Yeah.
To buy empty.
And plus the, the, we just talked about the underlying soils and, you know, ledge there, it doesn't really.
And I know they're not letting you, I think, I'm saying. Some.
Right. In the shade management area. Yeah, where the array is, there'll be some.
So that's what I've talked about, shade management. Putting some trees in.
Are you putting this in the form of a motion?
And I'm not, yes, the chair, I'm not voting on this, but I, I could present an option. If we're gonna go with a smaller stuff, we could always place a small fence, you know, same kind of fencing you use when you're doing roadworks, you know, not the, not the trees over damage. Trees, you mentioned that. Would certainly address your concerns of the area of sap, not, okay.
Thanks. Yeah. Um, I don't know.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, yeah. It's no sense.
Financial surety, what did we vote on? 513.
513.
513, 441.
So we're going to have to. It's gonna have to be an order of condition because the bylaw states that it can't be less than 1325 of the financial surety cost, so that's coming up as 641 to 5200. This is going to be an order of condition, that financial surety is from 641 to 52 by 13441. That's my last one.
Yeah, we'll, we'll take some votes on this.
Yeah. My last one, which is, being, I would be honest.
Yes, I think he has.
Yes, he is.
So the question I have is how many of these solar systems have you installed on slopes such as ours in the town? And are, how many?
Um, I honestly couldn't answer that accurately right now, but Rob, maybe you have some ideas?
Sure. Hi, everyone. Yeah, we, we've done it on, on steep slopes. North Hampton comes to mind. Weston's another one, I'd say, you know, without going back and measuring the exact steepness, probably, you know, at least half a dozen or so. Uh, it's, it's pretty common, I mean, these, these slopes are pretty typical for what you see on the side of a landfill. Phil, uh, we mainly keep to the, the top level plateau, but as you can see, we're, we've got provisions to, uh, extend to some, not the steepest slopes on the landfill, but some of the slopes on the western side. So ultimately, I, I may have mentioned this at a, a previous meeting, but the, the lower elevation block will be shimmed with gravel so that the east to west slope of the rack is about 10% maximum.
I don't wanna interrupt, John, just for a second, I just, I had to point out this is being recorded.
Um. Those, like I said, those are my concerns. Setback to hit that. Water tank. Uh, so. Trees I'm still in here. The engineer, so this is not. All right, and financial surety, I already made that one.
Well, anything that we need to vote on of yours, John?
Yeah, you're gonna have to vote on the financial surety.
All right, let's have a motion.
That's gonna be an order of condition, okay? There's, there's. Can you say both?
Well, we have to vote on it to make it an order of condition.
I, I guess you'd like to.
Well. Maybe formalize it.
Okay. So we list out the order of condition, we go all of them, or you wanna take one?
Either way.
Okay.
Whatever way you guys wanna do it. So at some point, there needs to be a vote on.
Yeah, so like, maybe this will help, so the order of condition for the surety would be that in keeping with the decommissioning report amount of 513, what's the amount, so I'll do it once.
513, 441.
Right, so in keeping with the decommissioned reported about 513, 441, order of condition would be to reduce the bond limit as shown in the zoning bylaw table to accurately reflect the decommissioning. So we're trying to bring the decommission report into line with the plan with the south and south.
And the zoning bylaw requires.
25.
That's why I'm saying that, um, that the, so you need the number, so you need the number that we're reducing from, which is how much?
641 to 50.
641 to 50, yeah. So 513, 441, right? All right, so that in keeping with the decommission report, I would require that the zoning plan, the zoning.
Want the section?
Yeah, the zone, the zone. What I wanna do is reduce the amount.
So you wanna waiver?
Yeah, that's essentially what it is, 7 dot 16 dot 9.
So waive the requirement under 7 dot 16 dot 9, from 641,250, 513,441, in keeping with the decommissioning.
Is that in the form of a motion?
To be reviewed every five years.
Is that in the form of a motion?
That's, that's what should read on the.
This will be a condition, are you voting on that condition?
Yeah, it's not a motion, it's gonna be a condition.
All right.
So we'll take it as a condition of the law.
Yeah.
Got it.
Anything else we need one of you to?
I just have one quick question.
Go ahead.
Want to follow up, um, really more of a point of order, just to make sure, I spoke with a old friend at the DGP today, actually somebody who was there when the cap ended, now works at the DGP. And if I'm following the lease right, because the concern that we talked about is they usually leave even regarding the cap. So protection of the cap. So the, the thing that comes up, I cross check for the lease. Basically what we're down to is the post closure use permit, and that is pulled by you folks, if I'm reading the lease right, it's pulled with your cost expense.
Right.
Um, and then the separate part of that is the indemnification, which means if you folks do anything, cause an issue with the cap or violate the terms of the post closure agreement with the DGP. Everyone needs to understand, they're not gonna turn to you, they're gonna turn to us, and we gotta turn to you. And then we gotta kick in the indemnification. The only concern I have at that point is, if we get to that point, the damage is done, then fair, like we get, well, we installed it as per plan, no heat in, the town's in the middle. But in the end, the town owns the problem because DGP's not talking to you guys, and they're not talking to anybody but or help them. So that's the, I'm, I'm, my read on this is that it's covered fairly tightly, I just thought you should be aware of it, and that was the only one from DGP. Is that, in the way you all understand it as well?
I mean, I don't, I understand that we take responsibility for any damage that we do to the town, you know, whether it's during construction or something that we install that does damage the cap. And so then just, you know, the, the technical way that that comes out, you may be right that it may go to you, you turn to us, look to the first provision of the lease. Or it may be something where DGP contacts us as well, or we notice it and contact DGP, so I just don't, I don't wanna say like, yes, that is precisely how it's going to happen is.
And then I have, I guess what I'm looking at is there's to alleviate any obligation on the part of town to have to get in the middle of this thing later, having to deal with it. And I guess I'm just curious, have you been in any such, run into any situations with, with any of these scenarios, post closure agreements or DGP or?
In terms of Rob.
I, I have not, but Rob, you might have. Yeah, we've never had any significant issues, so, um, I mean, ultimately, yes, you, the town owns the landfill. The post closure use permit will typically be issued to both the town and AMRESCO. So, you know, technically, both entities are responsible for adhering to those conditions. The only time that we've ever really run into any issues is, is with the utility, when they'll come out and say install a pole without coordinating with us or anybody. But that's really it, we, we've never had any significant issues, and I've done probably about 20 of these types of projects.
All right, I just wanted to point it out. Clear the balance of, so that we can all. Judge, gotta hand up to that.
Okay.
Wouldn't this be a condition as part of the lease that they hold with the town instead?
Yes.
And since because you are modifying the decommissioning bond, we're gonna have to modify the lease to make sure we sign with them. It seems like this would be an opportunity to incorporate your suggestion into our lease document to codify the fact that any disturbance, any whatever issue is the responsibility of AMRESCO going forward. But it's tough to put in your permit, but it's very easy to put in the lease document as well, because us as the board of health, as you said, would be the point person on that.
And as a point of order, I wasn't looking to put it in the condition.
No, I just wanted to make a great suggestion, since again, we have to open up the lease to cover the new amount anyhow.
But it's the lease, it's, Franklin would have to do that.
Absolutely. As a good suggestion to us, hey, since you're modifying the amount, why don't you put it in a paragraph, making sure that, you know, this responsibility is dealt to the entity.
There's three paragraphs in it, John, and we probably clean them up there, but I just wanted to point, because there was some concern about it on this end, it looked like it had been covered, because we talked about professional procedures. And it all fell into the conversation that last time, thank you, well, you guys offered us.
Sure.
Anything else? Madison? Go ahead.
I was about approval from the E P and confirmation of no outstanding issues.
Yes, great.
I think, approval from the E P and confirmation of no outstanding issues, but back to Mark from the highway departments, concerned about an open case from our first meeting. Or review, also copy of any questions raised from the D P review process. I have peer review of all reports prepared monthly. That's the E P review and whether there's a construction schedule or plan to ensure constructional minor improvement, or the transfer station hours.
The use of the transfer station is co-credit, it's covered. So I actually, that's.
Yeah, you gotta speak up, this Joanne can't read, she's taking notes. Any else? Well.
Where are you with contact or fish game?
Uh, so, I don't know if you wanna do an update on fisheries and wildlife? Yeah, I can, or, I mean, we met with Conservation Commission last Wednesday. Uh, we were sent over a draft order condition, so we're reviewing that right now, and we're gonna provide comments over the next week to 10 days, I think the next meeting is August 18th, to, well, hopefully have those, um, you know, fairly set in stone prior to that meeting. And then, um, natural heritage, we submitted the conservation management plan, the application, just last week. And we got initial feedback that everything seemed like is in place and in order, uh, but they still have to go through it in detail, I think they have 30 days to review it, and then Rob, do you wanna give a, a update on the D P permit? I think that's trending towards approval by the end of August as well, but I'll let Rob comment.
Yeah, I'd say that's accurate, Steve, we did hear back from D P, they had some comments on our submittal. We've responded and addressed all their comments, um, I did send it back to D P. Either last week or the week before, the, the lead person, uh, who's reviewing it, actually got an out of office response, so he was on vacation, but I expect that, you know, he'll, he'll start reviewing it again, and they're usually pretty good about reaching out, um, if they have questions as they review, so I, I would say end of August is, is probably accurate as far as getting their approval.
Um, let me ask if they, are they looking for any changes to the plans that you submitted to us?
No, they're really focused on the landfill piece, um, I think some of the, the changes were related to addressing, um, some of the stormwater on the eastern ground mounted parcel. We will be providing them with a set of construction plans, um, prior to construction, there's usually a, you know, quite a few conditions that they list on their approval, and we'll need to provide things like health and safety plan and, um, and the construction drawings will be part of that, as well as, um, personnel on site, construction schedule, those types of things, but really, the, the landfill layout itself hasn't changed, and that's, that's really their focus.
Judge, could I ask a quick question?
Go.
So with regard to, the lease indicates that you folks will have a construction meeting prior to 14 days with the board, Board of Health Board, starting prior to the commencement of construction. So I guess if I'm assuming it correctly, you have to have all of your sign offs from D P, post closure, natural heritage, so once you get all those sign offs, then you meet. then you meet with Board of Health, Select and Engineer fourteen days prior, then it begins, you can't do anything, a lot of those sign-ups come back, and then you have your construction meeting.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Which makes, doesn't, the lease indicates, it just, the lease doesn't say anything about sign-offs and all that, it just says fourteen days prior to commencement of construction. So those things have to happen first.
Correct, correct, yeah.
And then the D E P department, they want them, okay.
They will be.
Billy, you got something?
Uh, just one, so, did we vote any heat on the fence?
It was in a kit, it was changed in one of the meetings from seven to eight. I don't know that it was officially voted, but it was brought up, it should be changed to eight.
Thinking of condition.
And, uh, did we decide on the, uh, the screening on crossroads?
We talked about it, because the issue was the interwoven fabric, and what it's affected beyond the fence, which is the post. Because that fabric is just the. I mean, I, I guess I've thought about that some since we talked about it, I don't believe we put it in the conditions yet. The only issue I have is because of the small metrology, they're going to screen eight feet of fence, it's not going to make any difference, it's the whole thing, it's above it, and.
Well, that's what I was going to bring up, I rode there over the weekend, and, I mean, you look at the top of the cap, and you see it, you know.
She'd have to put a fifty-foot fence up there.
Well, yeah, and it goes back to, it goes back to when we originally did the cap back in nineteen ninety-three, ninety-four, that part of the reason for leaving that open and visible, we weren't thinking solar field, we were thinking security, because you could see up to the transfer station without necessarily having to get out, get out of a police car or something. So if, if that's going to be the case, I mean, I don't want to say offensive, offensive necessary, obviously. A padlock wall, a padlock wall, keep an honest man out, this is just going to stop the stragglers from walking up there. So you're going to need a fence anywhere, but screening, I think, is somewhat, the more I think about it, I don't see where it has to be devoted towards us.
Well, if you also need the fence because of some work for you.
Well, that's what I'm saying, it'll keep people from, yeah, you need something to stop.
Yeah, the fence is one thing.
Yeah, so that's, you need the fence, I just don't need the screen.
So the notes, weren't sure whether you suggested with screening or without.
Let's go without.
That's, it was brought up, you weren't here, that's why, okay, so without. So are you making that just as a decision, or are we putting this in?
Condition.
It, it is a condition?
Because we're making the fence eight feet.
Okay, without screening, okay.
Anything else from any member of the board?
Mark Langoney came into my office, and he sent me an email, and it's talking about the fence in front of the compost pile that the residents go to, he's asking, I can read you the email, because I printed it and I can't find it. After reviewing the latest set of drawings dated six eleven, he's satisfied with the modifications to the material staging area for the highway department. It looks as if the fence will come across the top of the incline, which should leave us with enough room. I do not have a concern with the fence by the compost pile. On the plans, it appears to run in front of the pile, blocking access for the residents to dispose of their grass and leaves, and for the highway department to remove the materials when it's ready to compost. He wants to see the fence installed around the backside of the compost pile, allowing access for the residents and the highway.
Yeah, that should be the case, so that could just be a, something we need to modify on the plans if it isn't on that.
Do you have? You have the plans right there.
Rob, you still on, is that the case, or, I know we agreed to that, so we have no problem with.
I am on, Steve, I'll, I'll look at the plans now, um, but yeah, you know, absolutely, we would, we would put it behind the compost pile, so that the residents still had access to that area.
Anybody coming in, please sign in. Anybody else got anything?
Should we list out the order of conditions and say them out and vote on? Make sure we get them all.
If we got them all.
I think we do.
These are the ones from Matty, I don't think I got that side one, so confirmation of no outside issues, so we'll just get some D E P, and ask back, and we'll just provide whatever email we get, uh, saying that there's no issues, the second one I didn't get.
Uh, peer review of all reports, there is something with that.
I repeat that one, peer review of all reports.
Last time you guys mentioned that, every month, you have to decide something, so you feel satisfied with the construction.
So this was the conversation that we talked about, the reports that are done each month, that will submit them to the town for review, and then you submit them to time bond for any comment as we move forward, so that I think is what.
That's what you're trying to do, yeah, yeah, no, no, that's good, because I know we talked about it last, yeah.
It was your solution for the, uh, clerk of work.
Yeah, so that, so that monthly reports to both, from the construction reports, and reports to D E P, and other outside sources, we can send them over once a month for us to communicate time bond for, here, for their review.
Okay, and so then, third.
I think we're good.
Okay, so schedule one, okay, so then.
Exactly.
Okay, then those are, those are fine, and then, the fence, and I guess it's revegetation, sound like we're okay with the slope. Uh, and then the revegetation piece, I guess, I don't know if there's any condition on how we revegetate.
You want a natural.
Natural, yeah.
Let it rehab itself.
That's what we usually.
He's going to live out.
Write an exercise.
He's going to get acid.
If there's nothing else, Joanne can read the conditions off. At least, I think she's the only one capable of reading all the conditions off.
I think they're pretty capable, too.
No.
Um.
Joanna, the attorney, they got.
So why doesn't she read them off, and we'll have a vote on it? Okay?
Where's your main?
John, is that a condition about the, um, outside, the shade area, the trees, is that going to be a condition, or that we're not staying? Well, I have so far, um, setback waivers, which is indicated in their waiver sheet, so I would just pretty much go by that west fifty feet, north forty feet, south and east one hundred feet, which already complied to the bylaws, that's in their waiver, so I put the exact wording for that. Um, the second waivers for the scale of the plans, they identified that as waiver number one, um, the scaling, um, the plan scale required was one inch to two hundred feet, or one inch to forty feet, they require multiple plan sheets, so they requested that plans be sized differently. I was going to copy that exactly as a waiver, too. Um, the cistern not to be included on the plans, I don't know if you want to reword that, the board agrees to, do you want to say something? Are you just, cistern not to be included?
Just say the installation of cistern is not required, sorry, and just wait, but.
Hang on a second. And then I have the section seven point one, six point nine, a waiver, um, from six forty-one two fifty to five thirteen four forty-one, and I'll recite the section of the bylaw that references that hundred and twenty-five, John, percent of the property, uh, the amount. I was going to reference that bylaw.
So just.
And Joanne, just to note that the bond, the bond requirement, fiduciary requirement, is applicable to the decommission plan, so that's how we got the one with the other.
Say that again, please, the fiduciary.
From one point two five percent under seven point six point eight.
Yeah.
From six.
Yeah.
Six forty-one two fifty. Thirteen, um, in keeping with decommission.
Yeah, got it.
And the B review.
Yeah.
Five years, okay. And then, um, a waiver for the fence.
That language in the lease, from, yeah, reviewed every five years, okay, just wanted to.
And then you're doing a waiver for, for the fence, um, no, you're requiring the fence to be changed from seven feet to eight feet without screening.
Right.
And then I was going to put in Mark Langoney's, um, comment that the fence in front of the compost pile should be reasonable, should be changed or altered on the plants to the rear of the compost pile, wording of that effect.
Change the end.
Okay. Changed and relocated, and that's all I have. Six conditions.
Sleep with everybody?
Got Matty's conditions as well.
Well, I wrote them down, are they conditions, or are those things were outstanding that we're going to get back, the D E P reports and the, are those conditions?
Yeah. It is.
Okay, so you want to.
Reports be submitted to planning board.
Yeah.
Or peer review at our discretion.
Just for the people standing back there, chairs and racks up there, you're welcome to take them down and have a seat, if you do, please put them back after the.
What, and provide to time bond, are we saying that?
Let's just ask for our discretion.
Okay.
They look at it and say, okay, self-explanatory.
No need to send it to time bond.
Maybe we have a muscle, we don't, so we can not read.
Right, that makes a lot of sense.
All right, and there's another one, but D E P.
Yeah, confirmation of no outstanding issues, confirmation of D E P, of no outstanding issues. And one more thing, just for the waiver piece, I don't know, because you included all the waivers of years, that ten inch caliber waiver, it's part of like that site plan, if you just take the language.
I'm going to copy that, that's exactly what I'm going to do.
Yep.
Yeah.
That's, that's the list I have.
So I would have eight conditions.
Any else?
So it's one, you're all set, raise your hand, I'm going to make a motion.
I'm set.
She's all set.
I move that the plan as submitted, we approve, subject to conditions as read by the administrative assistants of the planning board.
Second, motion's made, second, it all is a favor, one, two, three, four, five. Anything else before this, please, stormwater? For the stormwater, or is it just a special permit?
Or we receive the.
John, is there a question about stormwater?
There's a water permit with this?
No, for just a special permit, this is special, we have stormwater permit, basically, we approved that stormwater permit goes on, dotted your plan, and that would be issued by, uh.
Just last, six eleven is the latest set of plans.
Rob?
Because I'm citing six eleven, I just want to make sure.
Yes, for the, the plans.
Last revision was six eleven.
That's correct, that's the most recent set, yep.
No, we're done.
We're, we're done, so I, we might accept a motion to an alert.
Oh, so you do it during special here.
S P two twenty zero twenty-one A. What's that?
That's our case number.
Just finished.
Is there a second?
How many questions do you have? Test is over. Got a motion?
There's a motion, there's a second, there's a second, all is a favor?
Aye.
One, two, three, four, five.
Very much, great. Very much, sure.
It'll be about a ten minute recess until we start the next year.
We've only had two people leave, the engineer, and, and so you got, so we only have to keep an eye on the list up front, and subtract two.
Okay. Yeah, I was, can you watch while I run down and bring stuff downstairs?
I'll watch this, this, you want me to take that down?
Well, I got a bucket.
It's up to you.
I'll bring it down.
Okay.
Figure saves some time.
One thing.
Um, okay. So I'm going to go down right now, because I took everything from the. Get confused, you know, tend to get confused easily now. No, take them, I have, I have two of them, I don't need. I'm going to go bring all this down.
So...
Oh, I have to stay locked it? Because after eight o'clock, if it still goes on, we have to have a door open because that's gonna lock. Remember? Yeah. Yeah, we can open. We have, remember to open it at eight.
Somebody, somebody had asked me about it, said you were leaving them closed until you got coming through the door. Once the room settled down, you can open them. So, so you know, that's what, that was the question. Any of you people? Maybe you tip on the back, there's room up front here. Hey, a little more, you can have a seat in front.
I want you to come down here and squash.
You can worry about this thing. Stop it. Don't me either. I, I thought you were trying to... Hi. How are you? How's mom? She's doing good. Still having time to...
She, she's also a lot richer.
Why?
By a dollar.
Oh, a dollar.
You all set, honey?
Yeah.
All right. If anybody came in that side door, could you walk up to the podium and sign in, please? Please sign in. Everybody has. Mark, there's no rehearsal here tonight. Okay.
Sign in over there, please. Hey. Yes.
They're ready, they're ready to go.
Senior Terry, please consult.
All right, meetings called the order. Meeting of the...
Hey, Brian.
Meeting of the planning board regarding Two Summers Road self-storage facilities. And myself, Robert Howard, John Matthews, Jason Baroso, Coach Snyder, Madison Pixley. That's it. And our administrative assistants, Ryan Fuhrer. Planning Board is established in chapter four forty eight, General Laws of Massachusetts. Acts in compliance with forty eight under the zoning bylaws of town of Amgen. Chapter forty one, governing the submission of approval of Plastics, close subdivisions and the rules and regulations governing the subdivisions of land in Amgen, Massachusetts. Uh, the Amgen Planning Board is holding the meeting tonight. It's been posted properly and... And any other reports from other department heads are being received. That's it. Yeah, I just want to report that three selectmen are present here tonight. They are not participating in the, in the testimony at all. And therefore, they are not in violation of any open meeting laws. And this meeting is being recorded. Is anybody else recording this meeting? Where? All those?
Yes.
Building inspector is concerned with regards to stormwater. Water table is known to be high in that area. It also seems that a lot of penetration paving. Impermeable paving, and the basin is right next to the McNair House. The Board of Health stated this project is to choose on the passing of per test, inception design, approval, and portable water. Fire chief stated there will be a max key, box key holder for self-storage. Chief of Police indicated there would be no issue with the storage facility from the police department standpoint. We'd also like to make sure that clear sight of view.
Again, you're in the back. Thank you.
We also would like to make sure that if there's seats up front here, you can't hear.
What to be called?
There's seats up front if you can't hear. There's seats behind us if you can't hear. I'm speaking as loud as I can. We'd also like to make sure that clear sight, and any interruptions will not be tolerated. What's that?
Exterior noise, awesome.
Well, we can close those doors. The chief of police indicated there were no issues with the storage facility from the police department standpoint. We'd also like to make sure that a clear sight of view is kept when pulling out onto the roadway from this location. Any new plantings to be kept out of line of the side of the driveway. The town clerk reported there are no outstanding taxes to bear. Uh, when people speak, please identify yourself with your name and address, please. First, we'll have the applicant's presentation, the opponent's presentation, and our, uh, and audience, or, audience questions after the board, uh, the planning board questions. And then there'll be responses back and forth. As a planning board, we are sworn in, uh, to uphold the laws of the bylaws as adopted by the town meetings for you, the citizens of Amgen. This property is... Uh, zone business. This is a business. It can be reasonably regulated. When you do speak, I'm gonna ask you to, uh, please direct your questions through the board. And speak to the issue. Only speak when recognized by the chair. Please no interrupting other speakers. Be respectful of each other's positions. I'm gonna try and give a balance between the proponents and opponents. Generally speaking, no more than five minutes of discussion from anybody. Except maybe the attorneys who already represented some, some parties. Any conduct that is outside of proper conduct, I have the authority to have somebody ceded. That means they cannot participate in discussion anymore. If that, uh, that conduct continues, I have the authority to have somebody removed. That's the last thing I want to be here after doing. Okay? Being nothing else, we'll hear from the parties. You can use whatever you want to use.
Well, we'll be on the, yeah. You want to have it, it can be on the cell.
Right.
You can now. You want, I don't, you want to move up closer? I don't know.
It was emailed or it's on the computer. I can look it up and share my screen.
Okay. It was emailed to her so she can screen, show it on the screen again. They didn't email it to her. Was it, was it emailed to them? No, forget it. They didn't email it.
Okay.
Is there anybody actually participating in calling them?
Are there any people online?
Yes, there are seventeen.
Thank you. Good evening. My name is Daniel Garkey. I am the applicant. I have a office address in one twenty four Shape Road, County Salametal zero one zero two eight. Also with me is Robert Di Benedetto. He is our engineer. He's the one who helped us put together the plans. He is from Sherman and Frederick with a business address of three Conover Street, Auburn, Massachusetts, zero one zero six nine. We're here before the board asking permission to build a self-storage facility. It'll be located on William, located off of Islam metal road. Orlando, as was stated by the chair, is in the business district. It is approximately five point eight one acres of property. Again, it's located off of Islam metal road. And to give the audience an idea of where it's located, the best thing I can tell you is that it's actually behind the Polish National Credit Union. Our neighbor to the right is handling septic, but we got residential waters behind us into the river. So again, the location is directly across the street from Reese Restaurant, and again, we're collecting the Polish National Credit. A limit about myself. I am an attorney. As I mentioned, I have a business address of one twenty four Shape Road, Islam metal, Massachusetts. I've also been in commercial development for approximately twenty years. And during that period of time, developed commercially in the town of Ludlow. And during that period of time, developed commercially in the town of Ludlow, Conde Vassal Meadow, in the city of Springfield. One of the projects that we developed back in two thousand and four was a similar self-storage facility. We built that back in two thousand and four and we operated that facility since for the past seventeen and a half years. The reason I bring that up is because we are experienced self-storage operators. We think we use that experience when we work with our engineer to put these plants together. We tried to, they were well thought out. But I think it's important for all the audience to know that we're here to listen to what your comments are, what your concerns are. We want to try and take those comments and concerns into consideration. We understand that we'll have to come back with a supplemental plan. But we will take those comments, considerations, concerns and actually try to the best of our ability, implement those comments and concerns. I think that's important to us because in all the projects that we've been involved with, whether that be the town of East Long Meadow, Ludlow or Springfield, we've always been good corporate neighbors. We want to try to do that beginning tonight. We understand that this is a big change, specifically and especially for the ones that we have that are residential. But we did think about it to the best of our ability. But again, we're here to listen to what you have to say. If there are changes that we can make a plan to address those comments or concerns, that's what we want to do. But as I mentioned to you, what we're asking on board is permission from the board to build a self-storage facility and it's located off of East Long Meadow Road. The buildings themselves will be very similar to the buildings that were built on Commercial Drive, which is also here in the town of Amgen. It's about a half, half a, sorry, half a mile away from our proposed site. Those buildings will be identical. So if you want to get an idea of what they're going to look like, that's a really good measure of what they're going to look like. They're very similar to what you built in Springfield as well. They're going to be single-story drive-up units. So in order to gain access to the property, there will be a control gate. What you're seeing here, again, are single-story buildings. They will all have four-inch concrete slabs, just like between the garage. There will be no power to these particular structures. So that means no power to any of these units. And they'll be only available for storage of regular household furnishes. The height of the building, the approximately, the high side of the buildings are approximately twelve feet. The low side is a bit lower than that, so the rain can come down, it keeps going the better, it's a going for the retention system. So again, those buildings will be metal buildings, single-story, drive-up units, no power to the units. The high side will be approximately twelve feet. Again, if you want to get an idea of what they're actually going to look like, of the storage facility, it's like most of the drive, because that's essentially where all of it is. The site itself, so the first thing that we tried to come up with when we actually developed the site was, we understand that we have residential neighbors. We understand that those residential neighbors enjoy having to work for a long time, building, sport. We get, we understand it's going to be a big change. So what we tried to do, the first thing we tried to do is to say, okay, what type of screening do we put up? So the first thing I'd like to just point out to the board and to the public is that this will be a secured site. By secured site, I mean, we'll be installing a fence as depicted on this plan throughout the project, the project, the natural layer of structures. There'll be one entrance in that's controlled by a gate, we'll talk about that in a minute. But again, what we're proposing is a chain link fence around the entire site to secure the site. What we've proposed is a five-foot chain link fence. We had some discussions about different types of fences, but that's not a discussion. Based upon the feedback that we're receiving tonight, we're certainly hoping to change that. But again, we thought at least a five-foot chain link fence would work. We talked about screening, we did not include screening in the plan. We certainly would if we think that direct butters thinks that that, thinks that that's important for, certainly willing to consider that as well. In addition to the chain link fence, we have plantings along all of the residential properties that we occupy. So what we propose are our devices, that's generally what contractors do for a number of reasons, more particularly is the three-hundred year ramp. So it does give you a very good screening. We propose those certain distances apart. And that was generally based upon the information that in discussions that we have with our engineers. If those are the devices have to come back closer, not a problem. If there's other species of trees or plantings that the neighbors think would be more beneficial, we'll certainly listen and if we can incorporate them in the plan, we will. But I think it's important for you to know that we're here, we're trying to even incorporate neighbors. And we will listen to your input and we will try to the best of our ability to incorporate your suggestions and your requests in this one plan. How this site will operate, as I mentioned, it is coming off of East Long Meadow Road. So our driveway will kind of be where Reed's, if you know where Reed's is, Reed's Restaurant. It will be one entrance and one exit. Again, it will be controlled by a gate. That entry gate is controlled by two keypads. One keypad on the exterior, one keypad on the interior. The reason why that's important is it's a controlled site. You can not get back into the site unless you have a valid key code that they give you by one of us, one of our staff. So again, it is a secured site. But logistically, you come off of East Long Meadow Road, our entrance road is approximately twenty-four feet width. As soon as you come into the site, you notice that we have four parking spots, two handicap, two non-handicap spots. And our office will be outside of the gated area. So if a potential tenant wants to come in, someone wants to come in and talk to us, again, they don't have to, will not be allowed to, but we have, go behind the control. But again, I think it's important to know that our office is going to be outside of the control. So this is our plan in a nutshell, which is again, twenty-four foot driveway, they come in, you have the office. The control gate, what's the control gate? Control gate basically is an automatic gate. It will not open unless a valid key code is entered. Cannot get into the property or can't get out of the property without a valid key. We know who comes in, we know what time you came in, we know what time you left. This whole property will also be under constant video surveillance during normal business hours, those will be monitored in the office. When they're not office hours, they'll be viewed remotely. So again, the system that we have in place, we know who's in there, when you're in there, and the cameras tell us what you're putting in the storage. So that's it in a nutshell of our proposal. Entrance, exit, this gate inside the buildings. Again, what's important to us is the screen, more particularly along residential neighbors. A couple of things you should know. I did, I do understand on any commercial project, traffic is an issue. We understand that. But I was speaking from eighteen years of experience operating a similar site, almost identical to this site. If I was to tell you how many trips per hour we go in there, I would tell you five to six would be extremely high. That's going to be five to six people coming in and out in one hour. That is extremely high. I'm saying this just based upon my experience in eighteen years of operating those sites. I'm telling you this based on my discussions with the operators in East Long Meadow and the operators in Wolverhampton. These sites, historically, and our operations submitted this to you. Historically, the sites that operate on the self-storage of well do not generate traffic. And that's my own experience. Next thing that I think I should talk about is lighting, that was another issue that's come up. We will make sure that all of our lighting is shielded such that no lighting is kicked back to any neighbor, neighbor, whether that be residential or commercial. So all the lighting on this property will be outside the fifty-foot buffer if it's, if it's residential property, it's twenty-five feet if it's one of our commercial properties. So again, one thing I think that's important, we have, we have pre-bike, zoning bylaws says you cannot build within fifty feet of a residential, we've done that. You cannot build within twenty-five feet of a commercial, a commercial zone, this property, we've done that as well. But the lighting will be far enough away from any residential butters, any commercial butters, and it will be shielded, so will be no back lighting that can apply. Lighting, again, is important, something that's come up in all of our commercial projects. The other thing I will tell you is that stormwater is also a big factor. And that's where the engineers came. So the engineers and I went out to the site, examined the soil, there's certain procedures that you have to follow. I'm certainly not an expert, I have the expert here in the spirit of answering questions. But when we put together the stormwater, again, we did consider the fact that we've operated similar facilities. In a nutshell, we're required to make sure that all of the water that falls on our site is properly maintained in our system. It's much more complicated than that, but that's generally what it is. So what we've done in our plan is we've made sure that all of the water that falls on our site is actually treated onsite and is actually put back onto our site. We are not putting any water on any of those sites. We are not putting water on any public places, probably. So again, it's very technical in nature, but I think you should have some peace of mind that according to our ordinances, our design, our calculations, all being submitted, you need an engineer. An engineer is picked by the town of Amgen, they select the tiny bond as their engineer. Our plans, our maintenance plans were all sent out to tiny bond when we first applied for it. Unfortunately, I just got that revision from tiny bond at about four o'clock, I was on the road. And when the engineer was on the road, I took a quick look at it, engineers taking a quick look at it. There's nothing in these revisions that would prohibit us from moving forward. We got every anticipation that we're going to be fully compliant with the water retention system that we require, not only by our ordinance, but also state federal law. Generally speaking, and again, I'm not an expert, but we retain the water by using a couple of detention basins that are ready to guard. The first detention basin will be located off of East Long Meadow Road. And the second detention basin will be located here at the property. So in general terms, basically the water falls onto the surface or the water falls onto the loops. It goes down into an underground system, it's treated before it hits the detention basins. And then once it goes into the detention basins, it does seep back into the ground. There's certainly a whole lot of regulations, but the one that I've always been aware of is that each of these detention basins cannot hold water for more than seventy-two hours. So again, our calculations show that, I believe tiny bond has confirmed that. But again, there are some things that I saw in the report from tiny bond. We will have to re-signet some additional calculations, but we see nothing that would prohibit us from being completely compliant with all these stormwater requirements. And now, terrible state issues. Another thing I'd just like to touch upon, because there's an article in the Times that I read and talks about front. As I mentioned, I've operated a site for eighteen years. I've never heard from any of my residential butters or my commercial butters that the construction of a self-storage facility has increased the crime in any neighbors or any of the neighbors. Again, that's just me from my own eighteen years of experience. I do know the operators in East Long Meadow, I do know an operator in Wolverhampton, and they have over a sentence. I would also suggest to you that the storage facility down at Commercial Avenue, Commercial Drive, which is again, is about less than a half a mile away from this site. Obviously has been constructed, obviously has been in operation for a number of years. My understanding is they have, that the neighborhood surrounding that site before the residential neighbors and commercial, they have an experience in the recent part. But I think when I heard the plan from the police department, the police department or at least the person who put together the report, they didn't think there would be any additional resources through the police department. So yeah, that's kind of our site in a nutshell, there's an awful lot more to say. But I do want to hear from residents, and I know I've mentioned this before. We have done a lot of commercial projects. We've always been good neighbors, we can certainly check with the town that we operate in now and have always operated. You will listen to you, you will take into consideration what your comments are. We understand that there is going to be a burden to these people. We're trying to do the best of our ability to screen our operations. If you have something that's better, we can implement it, we'll be more than happy to consider it. If we can implement it in the final plan, we'll be happy to do it.
The next procedure will be for the planning board to ask any questions from the audience. Bring in the planning board. Whatever, whoever's ready. John, Phil Snyder first.
The hours of operations?
The hours of operations, so the office will be open Monday through Friday from nine to four. Saturday, nine to one, Sunday closed. We do operate twenty-four hours, seven days a week in Springfield. That's an open item for discussion, if the board feels as though that's not appropriate, we would certainly entertain reduced hours of gate access to something more reasonable in the board's eyes. The only thing I would ask is that those requirements be universal, you don't put us at a disadvantage if one's allowed to operate twenty-four hours a day, that we'd be allowed to do the same. So whatever the standard is, we'll certainly comply with that.
We have hours of operation, special condition on Commercial Drive.
That's fine, that works.
Now, the distance in the upper language?
We have, the engineer, I did, I did ask that question, the engineer, he's here. But the reason why they spaced them so far apart is they said we wanted to grow. Now again, that's all for discussion. If you feel like four meters close together, and that's something that the neighbors we want to see, we'd be more than willing to accommodate that. And that's something that we would agree to, we'd impact the special department. Can we revise our demands to this?
And the five-foot fences? Well, you know, I'm over sixteen, so to me, five foot.
Yeah, it is, right in the main, five foot, six foot. Chain link.
Chain link?
Six foot chain links. And, and I don't need to speak out of turn, don't. They're common for hard wire.
Right.
And it's going to be a bi-coat fence.
I'm not a proponent of hard wire, it doesn't, the rest of the way.
Yeah. But.
Well, I got one in my backyard, sure lose every.
So that's, yeah, we have, I have to.
Phil.
I do, the driveway entrance. Yes, I believe the bylaw states there has to be enough for five vehicles to pile up before the gate, so to keep the traffic off of East Long Meadow Road.
There'll be, there'll be more than sufficient space, but I'll have the engineers actually calling on me.
Okay, and with the ten P M, would the site go dark?
They're on timers with motion or? We can do it either way, to be honest with you. If that's something that the board would say, well, if you want it dark after seven o'clock, that's something that we would do. And generally, we keep it lit, some of the lights are lit. But if the neighbors say we want it dark, dark.
What about motion?
We do have that ability, so the, the lights do go off either on a timer or a motion, we do have motion protectors as well. Yeah, so we could turn them off, only if there's motion where the lights go off.
The video surveillance?
Yes.
That would be kept in your offices?
For how long? Thirty days. So the facility would be under surveillance, as I said, we can keep the tapes for thirty days in the event that's, that's an incident. And those are also, we can keep those on our phone.
The king card burn, I'm sorry. The king card burn starts at, it doesn't go around, it starts from the parking areas all the way around to parking area, correct? If you look down in the, in the bottom right-hand corner of this, it says, begin king card burn.
Yes.
So that would prevent some of the water, I think, you know more about that.
Correct. You turn that so the people over here can see it, I mean, there was house so much. That would be hiding, you just can't see that the zooms on.
If anybody can't see the plan, it can be turned around later.
Oh, okay.
There's a sign shit there.
Oh, there is, oh, okay, I'm sorry.
They can see the plane in the back, that's a little more detailed.
I just like, they were locked down. Sorry.
Any other questions, Phil?
Oh, I'm good.
Next member to board? Madison?
Yes.
Madison, speak up too.
Sorry, I put some questions to the desk. The standard usually three feet.
If I'm looking at it, it's two forty, the, forty, forty-five, sorry. So you're looking at five feet on grade O.
From the road, yes, so from the top of the base itself, before it will, it will be.
The depth, I believe. It's on the perimeter facing in, and if you do have any of the buildings or wall packs, they would be in between there. Like, well, just left. We have them on the outside, but again, if the neighbors weren't in the inside. We have them on the outside, but again, if the neighbors weren't on the inside, we just felt that they'd rather have their side. Of course.
Okay, Jason?
A few questions on the arbor bodies. They generally go four feet wide, so like, and I have five feet pushes for four foot spacing, shield. If I'm a neighbor, I'm one of the three chambers. On the plans, I'm finding, I thought when you guys were in there last time, we talked about the maintenance area, or strips that actually think are the body, so just battery. I didn't see where we called out the plans. So I just want to make sure that you've got enough room. Angles aren't quite, without having those in the backyard. Currently, we're showing five foot offset from the jam fence to the property line. So with our road, there is access for a landscape with the work as they get larger. And that's kind of, if you've got a four foot wide arbor body, now you've got twelve inches. Go on your own property, we stay. So, yes, table that one. Usually, usually there's. Often, when it's such a contentious situation such as lighting, they'll provide a light showing, showing where, where light is, they'll be. Understood, so if we can get some sort of plan that shows. More detail, surely, or it's appropriate, exactly. Something happens with those lights, one of the neighbors complains that shields fall off, you've got one of the shields. It's a photometric. Oh, one of the comments from Typhus also.
You're gonna have to speak up some, because we always have a hard time recording.
One of, one of the, one of the other comments from Tyne Bond. Plantings in the rain garden didn't show a specific plant. So that's, right, I did see. That's all I got.
John?
Yeah, I'll be honest with you. From the. Little bit of fire, fire. If you were there today here, you're gonna have to, of course, so. You would be followed agreements changes, okay? Like you say.
John, you want to speak up?
Yeah, I'm not saying anything.
That's something new for you.
No, I, I, I haven't had a lot to look at Tyne Bond's response. So I'd like to look at that and maybe plan.
Okay.
They'll be, they'll be, they're going to have to reply to these comments. It's service, but my, my, some of them, they've already been, like, the arbor body thing, absolutely. I don't need to.
What's it, John? Okay, Phil had a couple of.
Me?
Yeah.
Gasoline or? Sorry, gasoline or any petroleum? We will not use salt on the property, and in winter, we'll use salt.
Now, how about toxic material? Same thing?
I would say same.
Because it does say greater than normal, i- is that part of your lease agreement?
Part of the lease agreement is, and again, we enforce it thoroughly, we do not bring toxins in term, not bring gasoline payments on the property. We watch you, and if you do, we speak to you one times, and if you don't comply, you're out.
And the second.
That's required by us, we buy.
And the second question I had is trailers and cars are not to be stored.
Yeah, now, we do have some parking spaces back here for boats. Generally, believe it or not, if someone wants to park a boat, we do allow it to park a boat, we do not allow landscaping trailers, trucks.
Well, I have to disagree because I believe. And just give storage of one unoccupied motorhome or travel trailer, and that's unresidential, that's. I don't even believe trailers or cars are allowed in Hamden on a self-storage facility. And I could be wrong in that. I, I read that two point six six, page thirteen. And I read that as a public garage, and I carried that in, so I could be wrong doing it.
We don't allow cars to park on our own site, we only allow boats, that's not allowed by ordinances defined by. We have one boat, we have had one boat.
Yeah, so, well, as far as the, no, there's no, no.
Is there a limit on boats?
Just by the number of spaces that we have on the plan, that would just be the numbers of boats that we'd be allowed. Maybe four or fifteen boats?
On page ninety-four, Jason, page ninety-four is seven point one one. I believe it reads no trailer or mobile home unless owned by the. Yes. Page ninety-four.
No boats, no cars.
No, the trailer.
Oh.
Under the boat.
Oh.
Anything else on the board? Is there somebody representing the opponents that wants to speak?
There is, Your Honor.
Please. Just, just one second.
Phil's comment is trailer, I think they're referring to mobile homes, not trailers. Who's saying you can't have a trailer or mobile home? Trailer or mobile, this bylaw shall be permitted. So no trailer or. Section two, but I would imagine. I know a lot of people with boats that have trailers.
All right. Okay. All right. Sir, for the record, please identify.
Sure, hi, good evening, Mr. Chairperson, members of the board, my name is Seth Wilson, I'm an attorney, I'm a lawyer. And I represent a group of, what are we now, four hundred and forty-nine present opponents to the project. And I have with me Mr. Jeff Rossetti, who is kind of the leader of this.
Yeah, you're gonna have, you're gonna have to speak up too.
All right, so my name's Seth Wilson, I'm an attorney for approximately four hundred and forty-nine voters to this project, led by Jeff Rossetti, right now, that number is still growing. Unfortunately, it's vacation time, it's the middle of summer, it's been a relatively short window for us to try to gather folks together and hear from them, so apologies in advance that we don't have. But I hope those folks here are fairly representative of that. And I think that the numbers are, are, are pretty clear that there's a large round swell of opposition to this project from the members of the town. And a large number of people continue, we can provide you the evening with the original signatures of those four hundred and forty-nine. And then, as I said, that number is growing, continue with that. I will note initially for the record that unfortunately, we haven't seen the suggested changes from Tyne Bond, and so we certainly want to be able to.
Copies of copies of these.
Wonderful, thank you very much. We also have not yet seen the comments from the various different contingencies of the town. And again, apologies for that, I was just retained yesterday, so I'm operating somewhat from behind here, so apologies for that. I guess I would like to start by pointing out that one of our primary concerns, there are a lot of what we consider to be required filings that have not been submitted as part of this process. And I'll go through, I'm gonna try to give you an overview, but then issue. Bear with me, I apologize for taking so much time, but there are a lot of people contributing, so if you need me to cut through it, I'll try to move faster.
The proponents took about thirty minutes, so you got about the same.
I'll try to keep it shorter than that, but make it over. Just. Okay, sounds good, I hope not to.
Just remember, I have twenty minutes to lose the jury.
I, 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 very well aware of that, I'm a very well trained litigator, and I'll try to. All right, first off, as I said, there are a number of different criteria that and specifically reports that have not been provided, and we think that there may be some additional need for additional commentary from experts that may help the town specifically on hydrology, aquifer, water recharge, stormwater management, things like that. I'm certainly not a storm, I mean, as regarded, I'm not an expert, I am certainly less of an expert when it comes to stormwater management and things like that, but there are some things that I, that I've noticed and would like to draw the board's attention to. I think that one of the key things to start with from my perspective is that the grant of this permit is discretionary, this is not a permit that's granted outright. And I think that the, the criteria within the bylaws specifically state that the special permit granting authority to the board shall not grant any special permit unless it finds these criteria are met. And I do have a case, the ACW case that dealt with an appellate court's review and approval of a ward's denial of a request for special permit in Westfield. That covers a lot of the same concerns that we have here. I think maybe the largest of which is the stormwater management and stormwater recharge, and specifically the fact that, if you don't mind if I use your plan. With, with respect, and I do mean it with all due respect, one of the primary concerns here is that what the proponents are doing is they're essentially taking all of the water from these huge impervious surfaces and shooting them right at the neighbors. Okay, and so that's a major concern. And yes, there are specific criteria we think have not been met with respect to setbacks and setback requirements. But I think the more important thing to consider is that even if those setbacks may be met in the letter, there is significant additional risk because this ground is so porous that the septics and the basements and the wells of the abiding property owners, which are all very close to this property, are going to be infected. And I don't know what the potential solution is for that. But I would suggest that the board has the ability to deny this application and the discretion to deny this application if it feels that's appropriate, and I'll give you some examples from the ACW case that specifically talk to.
Question?
Okay. I'm happy to, I'm happy to field a question.
Yeah, I want to ask that, so, because you had said that they're shooting the water over to the neighbors.
Yes.
I wonder what, I'm just looking for verification.
Sure.
If, if you.
Detention bases aren't short off. Now, if you, if you look at this, all of the water from this whole area, which now currently drains to, I don't know if you can see the contour lines in here, but there's currently a low spot, right, there's currently a low spot right about in this area, and everything drains down. When you get a heavy rain like three inches in an hour or hour and a half, that we got just about a week ago. All of that currently drains into the center of the property. This is reversing that and pushing all the water from impervious surface out to retention basins that are right on the back lines of all of these butters. And the suggestion that the, that those drainage basins are approximately three fifty doesn't look accurate to my now older eyes looking at the plan, which suggests that we've got elevations here of two hundred and forty-six, my interpretation is two hundred and forty-six or two hundred and forty-three feet. That's what I view to be the top of the burn, and then two hundred and thirty-nine at the bottom, which to my diminishing muscles adds up to about four feet or seven feet, that's looking at two hundred and forty-six feet as the top. What that does is it very specifically implicates the town's own requirements that infiltration basins of greater than three feet require a setback of at least a hundred feet from a well. And I can tell you that I went to and talked with butters specifically went up along here, who have wells certainly within sixty feet of their back property line, which means you've got a forty-foot slot outside. And what's not shown on these plans is the radii around the septics, which also require a fifty-foot setback under the town bylaws, and I can give you a section if you'd like to. But the plan's not showing what those, those radiuses are. The wells are all along the backside of these properties here, except for this one that's out front. And the septics are all along the back sides of these butters down here, some of them very close within fifty feet. And what you're dealing with is you're dealing with use of setbacks. This is the fifty-foot setback on this entire piece of property. That setback is used, is being used to retain water when the definition of setback in the town, in the town's own bylaw is. Setback defined by the town bylaw at two one one six of the town bylaw, says setback, distance measured from the closest point of a street or lot line to the nearest building, but in this case, it's a retention basin. Because setbacks in other than residential districts, which is this property because it's own business, shall be landscaped or left natural as required by the planning board and may be used only as a setback, not for roads, parking, or any other activity. And so we would contend, they're certainly being used for any other activity, which is infiltration of water. And again, water is a big deal in this town, and these folks' basements and septic systems are right along those lines.
Back here, just to summarize, short, you're saying detention basins, actually, you're considering the detention base actually six feet, not three feet.
Jason, Jason, you gotta.
I'm sorry, folks, I was just clarifying that what he stated is he's considering a retention basin, six feet, not three feet.
And again, I, and that's, you know, again, I'm not, I'm not an engineer, we have not had the time to retain a professional engineer and or to review the time law.
Clarifying.
Yes, no, that's, I appreciate that, and respectfully, their professional engineer may have some light to pass on that, but I don't think that that can excuse any sort of variance from the very clear definition of setback, which precludes it from being used for anything else other than just naturally vegetated state. In this, in this case, it's specifically being disturbed, and it's actually being used to direct water. Again, not suggesting they're doing it nefariously or anything else, they're trying to maximize their use of the property, which is legitimate. And it's our job to point out objections and concerns that you have with this, and try to recite them. But again, we've got a lot of folks who are pushing on, so, so that's where we come from. All right, let me, let me kind of circle back, I jumped on water because it's something that I believe building inspector or you have a building inspector experience, the water would be of particular interest to you. I'm, I'm not, I'm not worried about it, my sense was that I heard that the building, the building department. I'm I'm not, I'm not worried about it, my sense was that I heard that the building, the building department did have significant concerns about the water recharge and stormwater management, so I wanted to jump on that upfront, because I think it's one of the critical, if not the most critical. The next point I would I would make is, again, the board has the discretion to outright deny this permit right now. There are a number of things that were required to be submitted and specifically, and I can get you citations where these requirements comes on. But there was no required stormwater management plan specifically prepared than I've seen. Um, and again, I may be incorrect, there may be additional information, but I just haven't seen, I apologize. There's no required water recharge plan with hydrology or act of for in fact study. Uh, there's no required demonstration of setbacks to private wells, septics, or buildings. I haven't seen a lighting plan, I understand that it's going to be presented, we deserve the right to be able to comment on that and be able to have that addressed in public scenario. I understand that Mr. Garby has indicated he, in his experience, there really is no traffic impact from these uh, facilities. Respectfully, I I appreciate your experience, but that's something that we would need to have addressed specifically by a traffic impact study, I think that's required by the bylaws, and I haven't seen it. If it's, if it's there, then again, I apologize, I must have missed it, I'm happy to deal with it. I haven't seen any fire safety study or plan uh, of specific concern, I know to a lot of residents is fire safety specifically because this construction is so close to houses, and there's only one way in and one way out. Agreed, they have probably met the requirements in terms of access, you know, of two emergency vehicles, my son's a firefighter in Monson, so there's a little bit of personal interest there because we're a mutual aid town. Again, one of the challenges with a fire in a place like this is we do have a constrained fire department, I understand the fire department is confident they can handle it. I'm sure they are, my son might be one of the people responding to it. But at the same time, I think that it's important to have a study done that really addresses that risk, because that's a major, major concern to a lot of the people that I believe I represent, and certainly people can shout me out if they disagree. I also think that there really hasn't been any effort to match the specific rural type of architecture that you're dealing with with this particular site location, I understand that there is a facility on Commercial Drive. Um, and I expected it probably is of standard character in the storage building industry. Uh, and and generally, that's appropriate um, in a commercial context, in much more of an urban setting. Uh, that's not what we have here. All of these butters and all the folks in the neighborhood moved here because of this hand. They moved here because of the upscale rural character and nature of this town. And my understanding is that, and I can tell you from my own perspective, driving by, and I expect there are lots of folks who agree, this type of a proposal, notwithstanding the arduities, notwithstanding shielding and fencing and things like that. This is going to be, this is going to have an urban feel to it. And I think that characteristic alone would grant the board specific authority to be able to deny this permit on its face. It just is completely contrary to the character of this town, and I think the character of this town is very well demonstrated by the seal right on the front of the zoning bylaw. Right? There's nothing on this seal that suggests that a self-service storage facility matches with that rural character.
Any more of that, they'll empty the hall.
I'm trying to be.
What I mean.
Be respectful. I think that uh, I think the board can take uh, can take effective notice of of a lot of these things that I'm that I'm talking about, and I I may have left some things out. Again, according to the ACW case, there are certain things that are absolutely critical and that the board can rely on. I'm sorry, I do, this is the ACW case is a case where the appeals court specifically specifically upheld a challenge to a planning board's refusal of a permit. And intended that it was beyond the board's authority to deny the permit, and the board denied the permit because it was a, it was a gas, at least it was a gasoline station. But I think there's a lot of similarities here, because the primary concern was water recharge and water protection, the same is true here, this may not be a gasoline station, but you are taking what, what's the square footage on the facility? Five point eight eight, but square footage is fifty two thousand, like, square feet? I think it's on the plan, I assume. Yes, fifty two thousand eight hundred square feet. Um, that's shown on page uh, three of seven in the table of the dimensional requirements. And I've taken the liberty of providing a copy of both the ACW case and the uh, the table from the state's stormwater management uh, guidebook that talks about the minimum setbacks from wells, which is a hundred feet for private wells. And so, again, they're taking fifty two thousand, almost fifty two thousand eight hundred, it's almost fifty fifty three thousand square feet worth of water on an impervious surface. And they're just directing it right out to and to the recharge of yeah, aquifer, which is not that far from the Spanish River. I think that uh, and I'll have you read the decision afterwards, I'll read you a couple of quick remarks from it. But at the end of the day, you will see in this decision that the denial of the board was based and approved by the appeals court based on concerns over the risk of damage to the aquifer and the risk of damage to public and private wells, which is a specific massive concern of constituents that I have, I believe of tied law, and I believe of the building inspector as well. The other concern in the ACW case was traffic. And the court said that even though there was no traffic plan prepared there, the board could take constructive notice of a traffic plant that was provided in another, in a prior submission that showed that there might be a traffic impact associated with that particular project. The same is true of the twenty four hour nature of that gasoline station proposal in Westfield. Um, that was, that permit was denied flat out. It was not put in as some order of conditions that they change their hours of operation or anything like that. And then finally, the other factor that was specifically stated and approved by the appeals court, specifically stated by the board and proved by the appeals court, was talking about the rural nature of the Westfield community and the fact that a twenty four hour gas station was not along the lines of that rural character. And that's specifically provided in our by, in the M bylaw, and it's specifically something that is absolutely critical in this case, because it changes. This, this project is at the crossroads, it may not be on Main Street, but this proposal is at the crossroads of Hammond, it's the, it's the heart of Hammond. It's where everybody drives through, it's where everybody drives through when they're going to Ray Forest, when they're coming up from Summers, when they're coming south from Wolverhampton, it's a very visible site. Just like the other facility that we aren't talking about tonight, but there is a second proposal uh, that I believe will be discussed at the August eleventh meeting, and I probably will be there as well. Um, that is also a storage facility, so you have effectively a huge number of proposed storage units going into what all of the people around here, both in the neighborhood as well as the butters specifically bought into a nursery, there was a nursery behind all these places, granted, it's grown up now. But at the end of the day, a nursery is completely in line with the rural character of Hammond. There are lots and lots of permitted uses that are within the character of the town of Hammond. In this case, the board does have discretion to deny, to deny this application, simply because it would need to be by written decision and with a finding indicating that it didn't match with the character of the town, but that is specifically within the discretion of the board to do that. And this is actually a quote, actually a quote from the ACW case. The board has absolute discretion to deny special permits, and that cited McGivern versus Board of Appeals of Duxtry and Bay's Property State versus City Council ruling. The refusal of a board to grant a special permit, as here, does not require detailed findings by the board. You shouldn't make written findings if you choose to deny it, and I think you can do that tonight. I will also quickly point out a couple of quick things. At this point, I still have yet to see any justification for the need for additional storage, storage units in town. Not a college town, this is not a town that has a lot of renters. And the upshot of that is you're going to create an incentive to advertise more broadly to bring in the business needed to sustain the project, which means you're going to be bringing in folks from other communities. That's not necessarily a bad thing, attracting business to the local economy is a good thing, we all support that. But I'm not, it's not clear to me, it's not clear to me that the applicants have established that the, that the the nature of the folks being attracted to this business are the type of folks that are necessarily going to fit with the character of the town and are going to enhance the town's economy. And there may be, because of the transient nature of those ten, of those often using storage units, there, there may be some some negative aspects to that, I don't. Right, and that's why, that's why, that's why, that's why, that's fine, that's fine. And that's, that was my. But at the end of the day, there doesn't appear to be a specific need that's been established for additional storage units, there is one on Commercial Street that we are aware of. Section five point seven specifically enables the board to require an environmental impact study, that's six four point seven of the bylaws. Again, my initial understanding with this was that this was proposed to be twenty four hour access in nature, which I think creates additional potential problems. I understand that they have agreed to to reduce that, or it sounds like that, and I think that in the event the board decides not to deny, which we contend it should, I think there's a lot more work to do to try and get to the point where the conditions are sufficient, where it might possibly be allowed within the constraints of the regulations. But I still don't think that that ever meets the the cultural criteria associated with the bylaw. Alright, I think I've pointed out the vast majority of the points, oh, I think, let me, let me point out one more, one more point, and that is parking. The, with the very large size, the fifty two eight hundred square feet. The applicant has recognized that the current required number of parking spaces is far in excess of what they have the capacity to do here, and I don't know how to solve that. But I think that is an issue that's going to require a significant variance from the board to allow the project to proceed, I will also point out that I think that although there's been a representation and and I can certainly respect it and agree that uh, that they make every effort to prevent there from being any hazardous materials on site. I think the potential of any storage of vehicles or boats or ATVs in units or outside represents a massive risk to the wells um, and the septic systems of the, of the town people around um, around the facility and anyone further down, I know that there have been, there have been aquifers in town that have been contaminated by salt, or at least I believe that's the case, that it's required the town to uh, incur significant expense. And uh, you know, there are boats here, and for some godforsaken reason, you know, uh, I had this happen on my boat, a, you know, a line slipped off, there was, there was a bad connection. An awful lot of uh, damage can be done in an awful hurry. And so, to the extent that the board is even considering granting this at any point, I would ask that there be a bond put in place by the applicants to make sure that to the extent there ever was any damage, there was more than enough coverage to ensure uh, that whoever was damaged is either compensated and or that that the um, they are provided with uh, appropriate services to cover that that loss associated with the damage. So, Jeff, have I missed anything at this point?
That, that's good.
And I, and I may pass my twenty minutes judgmental process.
You're right on my. May I ask how many people are here are in for, are for the self-storage.
John, John, you haven't been recognized by the chair. Any questions for the board? Sorry, it's, I'll let you, but I, I would have the board question.
As far as questions, not, most have already asked tonight. But I did want to make some comments. Appreciate.
Thanks.
I can appreciate where you're coming from. I'm sure a lot of the concerns are valid, and you haven't been able to review the stormwater plan. I agree with you one hundred percent that this is not anywhere near where I would feel comfortable approving it as of yet. But at the same time, a lot of these concerns can be addressed. I'm new to Hampden, I've only been here about three or four years. I'm probably a handful of people in the audience know me, but when you're talking about the culture of the town, that is exactly the reason why I moved here. But I didn't, but right across the street, you've got commercial activities. So, and you've got McNamara Trump is across the street with sludge trailers, wastewater treatment and sludge trailer and stage that, you've got trash trucks. So, the area where this is going in isn't exactly.
You don't live there.
That's our backyard. Excuse me, one more of you and you're out of the room.
I'll leave now. Guys, they're putting drivers next to my driveway. That's not right.
You're out.
It is, it is a commercial area, so when I'm sitting on this floor, that is what I'm looking. If they can present something that adequately, in my opinion, they can present something that adequately addresses stormwater concerns, because if you brought up two hundred points, and they will get addressed, and you guys are more than welcome to get your own peer review, and we will absolutely consider that. Because that's, that's where we get to even ground, but if they can come up with something that it's gonna look better than what it does across the street, that's what I'm looking for.
And I can certainly, if, uh, Mr. Chairperson, may I respond to the question?
Sure, yes, sir.
Um, and and I, I think that, while some aspects of your point are are right on the mark, I think there's some other aspects that a lot of people disagree with, I picked up the key thing, one of the key things to remember here is that this property was until recently residential, it was just reasonable business, not commercial, but business. And so, again, these setback requirements, as, as I look at the setback requirements, their entire infiltration system is wrong.
I know, I know.
Right, so that's, that's right, um, I, I think that again, while across the street is is recognized as as commercial, now that these people moved into a commercial scenario, they moved behind the nursery that at the time they did, vast majority of them at the time they did was residential, I, I, and I don't, I don't know exactly what the justification was for changing that to business, but I don't believe it was with the townspeople having any concept that it would then be a storage facility, right?
Would have been two thirds of.
Just to, just to point out to you, counsel, if I could.
Sure.
On uh, May eleventh nineteen eighteen, two thousand eighteen, I mean. That zoning was changed to business by unanimous approval by the town here.
Okay.
No opposition at all.
That's fine, that's fine. But again, that was, that was for a parcel that was vacant, that was grown up and had always been used as as a nursery. And again, one of the other things that the, the, the board can take into consideration is the impact and diminution in value of the surrounding properties, and that's a critical component here. You have an awful lot of people who right now have Hampden's rural character right in their backyard, and that's why they moved here. And it applies to whole neighborhoods, not just the butters, and this this not only threatens the physical integrity of their properties, um, because the, the the ground there is extremely porous, I mean, but one of, one of the people that I talked to, their well is, I think sixteen feet deep. I would, Monson, I've got a five hundred and fifty foot deep well. I would imagine I've got a five hundred and fifty foot deep well, right? I mean, this ground is extremely porous. They don't have any pooling. And I mean, there are some pockets that have a little bit, but we had three inches rain in an hour and a half approximately a few weeks ago. And these people who are right here literally had no pooling. It just went right through and their water is always high. So, again, I, I hear you. I, I certainly, and, and you're on the board. I'm, I'm just offering some suggestions. I'm just offering suggestions.
Private wells, septic, sephs, I mean, that's, that's stuff on.
And, and I can provide specific references to any, to any of the comments that I've provided in terms of references to pages within the stormwater, within the stormwater guide, yes, guidebook as well as the bylaw. Sorry for taking so long.
Anything else from the board?
Yeah, if you would. Our administrators.
The, the citation.
Your, yeah, what you're saying is in our section of the bylaw. In the bylaw, what do you feel we've failed? And you can email it. I, I know you don't.
I'll find it. I'll find it.
So just what sections you feel are in violation with this plan?
Any other questions in the board?
And, and I would just point out that we do have those four hundred and forty-nine signatures that Jeff can offer now. Either full copies tomorrow or the originals tomorrow.
Tonight I can't give you two. I can show them two and we can give you copies.
Yeah, I'd like this. Hello, I'm Justin Senny. This is the number one in the mass. You're Jane Seth. Do you argue the technical points to this project? I don't think the parties are looking to intentionally undermine our town. So, what I want to tell you is, this product does not fit the location. We are not against a storage. We are against this, all these storage units in that location as a crossroads of our town. Now, one point you made, and I, I know you didn't mean it that way, but just to clarify, because McNamara's is on this side of the street, you certainly don't want to put something like that across the street.
No.
And you're not saying, you're not saying because it's there, then, you know, it's out the window. And the other thing I want to tell you is, this isn't about the abutters. The abutters are going to be impacted most. This is, the whole town is going to be impacted. And once this product is put on that location, there's no going back. There's no going back to your rural character. It's there. And maybe that wasn't well thought out. We would like to see something there. We would like to have business there, not this product. For now, that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Do the proponents have anything else to add? We're going.
We'll, we'll address the comments that we're making in the plan. I think that's the best way. I just don't have the.
That's fine. It won't be decided tonight. Does anybody else got any comments from the audience? The backside.
Hi, my name is Scott Selford. I've lived in this town since nineteen sixty. The guys that are here, blah, blah, blah. I know. This is a publication in our town. This is not part of ours. We need our own town. Business is fine. Storage facility. You want that look? You know, other towns. That's what we have commercial drive for. Okay, that's what we have these facilities for. Um, other than our backyards. It will affect our water. It will affect our backyards. I want everybody to think about that. Okay? That's all I got to say.
Anybody else in the audience? And please keep it brief as Mr. Selford did. In the back, sir?
My name is George Glover. I live in forty-four Meadowboro. I am an abutter. My primary concern is the well and the septic. Personally, I probably, I might be imagining it, but I think my well has suffered because of the concrete block. I can only imagine what's gonna happen if there, and I understand that the water is gonna be treated. I don't know what that means. Even treated water is gonna do something, it's gonna leak and the proximity of the setbacks to the wells and septic is concerning. The only question I have specifically is, what is the height of the light towers? And are the video cameras gonna be, is there gonna be any assurance that the video cameras will not be recording activity in the abutters property?
Proponent want to respond to that, please?
Right, so as far as the video cameras, absolutely. We will not be recording the direction of any of our residential or commercial unless we're granted permission. One hundred percent. We just want to monitor what's happening inside the units. So they will not be recorded. One hundred percent. Maximum will be sixteen feet.
Any other brief comments in the audience? Gentlemen in the back, please.
Number one, rubbish. Dumpsters, trash that they throw out from their, their storage units.
So with respect to the rubbish containers, I'm just gonna speak for my own personal office. In years, we've never put a rubbish container out there. We've never had any problems. The problem with us putting the rubbish container up there is that someone will fall off or whatever. So, we don't have one, but there's never a need for one. Our, our place is spotless.
The new camera, they're inside the unit, outside the unit?
No, I'm sorry. They're outside the unit. So we'll be pointed down the bays and at the front entrance.
So how do you, you say you monitor that they're bringing some hazards, hazards, materials? How do you know if I've got a box or something to close? How do you know if it's pesticide or whatever, four day?
Right, and what we do is when you come in, sign the contract and specifically state certain things that you can and cannot do. And the first thing we state is hazardous waste, again, prohibited by our insurance company, will be canceled in the event that they find hazardous waste on the material. We run a tight ship. We make sure that.
How do you know what's in the box?
Well, of course I would know what's in the box.
So they could store it?
They could store it in the garage. They could store it. I can't guarantee that. But again, we monitor it as vigorously as we can, and we do monitor those cameras.
So you don't know what they have in there. There's no way.
Not unless I look at everybody's box.
I use this.
Help yourself. Re naming address, please.
Stacy Mason, thirty Meadowboro way. That's my house. Okay, alright. That's where the dump goes. The water, right in my backyard.
My husband's been here since seventy-three. He bought this in nineteen seventy-seven. Rose of beautiful bushes from the nursery. It's overgrown, but it's wonderful still. No, we didn't know what was gonna be commercial. I didn't even know there was a vote on it on the two thousand eighteen, or I would have been here. Um, I don't think a lot of people know. And the thing is, is I don't want that in the backyard. Not that I want to knock down anybody's, I'm sorry. I don't want to knock down anybody's business. I'm there for everybody. I care for everybody. I'm not saying my yard's any better than any of my neighbors. I love my neighbors. But the drain's gonna go right in my backyard. That's where my septic is. I just need ten thousand dollars to have a new septic put in. And what is that gonna do to my brand new septic? And I have special needs foster kids. I don't want to have a business in my backyard that I'm gonna have to worry about them in the backyard if they don't, they're to go with strangers. So, I'm not knocking down your business. God bless you and everything else, but I agree with him. We should go into a place where it doesn't affect any neighbors.
In the back is.
My name is Don Collins, uh, seven twenty-one Main Street in Hampton here. In the nineteen eighties and nineties, I was a member of the planning board. And at that time, I underwent a survey of townspeople to see what their thinking was in terms of the future development of the town. What they want to see is where the town would go. The one thing that came through loud and clear was that they wanted to maintain the rural wing of character of a small town. This parcel of land down there is a very critical parcel for our inner city. People have referred to that area as the gateway. It certainly is where we commit to the town. Also, it is effectively the business center of the town. There are twenty-five thirty retail operations within that immediate area. Uh, and I would like to read from your bylaws briefly. Section ten, which you purchased special permits. It said the purpose of this section is to provide a comprehensive review procedure for which they have, like, for projects which may have significant impact to the town of Hampden. The impacts of such development and to ensure the compliance with the following goals and of the town. Under the goals, the third goal is to protect the rural character of its aesthetic qualities, the natural environment, starred features, and property value of neighboring properties. Mr. Garvey mentioned that this would cost potentially a burden to the immediate neighbors. Well, who's gonna satisfy? Value of their house that's down by thirty, fifty thousand dollars, who's gonna compensate? So, I recommend that going right by your bylaws, that this does not preserve the rural character of our area. It does impact the abutters, of which there are some thirty-plus residential abutters. And therefore, I recommend that, I recommend that they turn this down based on your bylaws, section ten, item twenty-one.
Thank you. Any else? Gentlemen here?
Yeah, Jim, yeah, I can see no forty minute way. I'm on a butter. The thing goes right to my backyard. I have the last minute here. I, I'm not familiar with the industrial drive on units, but as on the garage phase, I think doors, one in front, one in back. So I think I'd be able to drag around the back, like, right through my backyard.
I'm sorry, our, our proposal?
Yeah. So like my house is right.
There, there are no doors on each side. Only doors on each side. So back here, there's no.
Of all the doors, so they have, can they drive back here?
Yeah, so you, these are driveline. So if you're coming through the gate, if you get to the back, there is a way to get back.
So their lights are gonna be coming down, like, like, saying it's not catching.
That's why we have this.
Anybody else? Yes? You gotta, you have to speak up, please.
You need to understand, my yard, we have a shallow well. It is sixteen feet down. That's where it goes. Now, you wanna bug right next to my fence. That scares me. You've never had any problems since we've been living here in nineteen ninety-nine whatsoever, you know, with the big rain. Something happens there and that water comes into my lip and hits my well. It goes all the way even to seven. My well is scary to me because we depend on our water. That's here. What is gonna happen to that if this happens? Are you gonna take care of this problem if this happens or something happens out there? I'm not putting you on string for this because I think you're a good businessman. Like, if this was your house, I would be there. You have family. You feel the same way I do. This is my major concern. I have a shallow well. And if that thing comes in, oh God, what am I gonna do? Go stop and shop and buy pulling springs all the time when I move to Hampden? Is this what Hampden wants? Move to Hampden and buy your water and groceries store? I don't think so. That's all I'm concerned. And I want you to be, I don't want you not doing any kind of business for us. Think about this. Because this is our life. This is what we, I mean, I cry a lot. I'm like, Stacey, I cry. So, so I'm like, what's gonna happen? You know, I'm gonna have a grandchild soon. When the grandchild comes, we're like, we are, I mean, you know, I'm gonna die. It's scary. It's, it's, it's a scare.
Thank you. Anybody else without being repetitive, please?
It's not repetitive.
I didn't say you were.
John Bryan Bennett wrote, since the time bond reports in our public record was the process of obtaining a copy.
Be available, be available tomorrow in the planning board's office.
And the second question is, is the facility as you come in, I guess it's an office, Mr. Garvey said, will it have, um, facilities, water, toilets into that age?
Assuming it's. Yes, that the office will have also, I mean, the same, I just want to point out.
And where would the septic be for that? And where would the well be?
Right down. So the well is here and septic is over here. And I just did want to point out, I understand that someone thought that we're putting a driveway next to their particular hole. I just want to point out that this wideway access point is between the whole credit union and septic. It's not on the side. This is just a.
Anything else?
Really quickly, I just want to address the fact that you said it's now becoming industrial. Twenty-seventy Tom Meadow Road, the industrial area. You are partially correct. When we moved there, McNamara trash had rows of trees out front, couldn't see their lights, couldn't barely hear their trucks occasionally coming and going. Never affected the house. Then the credit union got built up. Years of crying. I have window film in my rooms so the light doesn't come in, even though it's, you know, la, 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 it's not supposed to affect you. It does. Don't fool yourself. Arbor Vitae's are now twenty feet tall. The bank lights with the domes that are sixteen feet tall, guess what? I go out my yard, look at the stars that I used to see. I see the lighting from the bank. Now it's gonna be in my backyard too. Across the street, McNamara has changed. Now it's just beaming lights like it's a goddamn baseball field across from my house. So yes, it's industrial. I have it on the side. I have it in the front. And hell, I don't want it in the back.
Any else? Identify yourself for the record, please.
My family's been in this area. Has anybody seen, been that long this time to the rain? Has anybody walked that area and seen what kind of rain it was?
Every day. We mow the paths in there. Just answering.
No, no. You're not recognized by the chair, please.
I wanna know, have you personally been down here in this area while this rain is happening?
The site itself?
Yeah. There's no rain at all once again? No rain, no rain?
No, I mean, I would defer to her, but I haven't seen it in the state before.
Come wipe my lap's paws.
So what about fire? I mean, what if something happens, we have a catastrophe, which does happen, we get the lamp blow up. We have Juan, storage, you know, storage bins, old dead bodies.
Yeah, again, there's no tower here. These aren't just for household goods. Again, we try to monitor the best. Again, we try to monitor it best we can, I can tell you that if I saw a live leak, the fire is going to run through. As I haven't seen.
What about that block?
There's no power, just so you know, one of the things that the employee does as soon as she comes to the site, she goes through the site, and she checks the computers, as I mentioned, you come in the gate, come out the gate, we know who's there. We actually monitor. So if you're coming more often than we, than the average person, we start looking at the cameras, we make photographs. And then we know who's there and how long they're there. Someone, there's no way someone would operate any type of business in those units without us knowing. Especially if we're close to two hours of high five. Five or ten minutes.
So in other words, no one can be allowing you to store anything past.
Ten, ten P M.
Yes.
Right.
Yet you're not.
You can't get in, the gate is controlled.
They can't get in, and when you're asleep, how do they know you're not asleep?
And you, you can't get in, you can't get out.
No way. So I, I can pull up in the storage unit, you may not be asleep.
You have to keep that out. You're not going to be there. So you can't.
Okay, so in other words, if I don't keep it, I'm really.
Of course.
All right, thank. A-anything else without, one more, in the back.
Can we assume you know, Mr. Garvey, the, the property values around other projects that have gone down to abutters? My assumption is going to be that all of the abutters, and all the people next to them, maybe even more spread than that, their property values go down. Is that true?
I don't believe so, but I have no empirical data, so I, I couldn't, I'm not a professional, I wouldn't. And when that's true, that affects, that affects tax returns for the town.
If I could just offer one, one quick point on that, I think one of the key criteria here is, one of the differences is we don't have any empirical data, specifically because Commercial Drive does not have any residences around it. It's in a commercial zone, it's only businesses around it. So I think that's a significant risk, that it's, again, justification for not.
Gentlemen, here.
Yes, in Storkia thirty-four Meadow Brook Lane, I also want to be abouters. That was one of the points that I would like to make, that he just did, is every set, I believe you've mentioned today, is not in a residential neighborhood, it's in a commercial. So some of those problems are there, I understand I'm repeating that. My other concern is the fencing. I have young children. You're talking about putting barbed wire fence on top. I mean, good luck keeping a five-year-old away from that fence. And to me, five to six feet still seems pretty low, if you're right up against houses like that. Also, how long is it going to take for this, you know, growth of, to shield the property? Am I going to be looking at the back of these storage units for ten years till they fully grow, and am I doing green?
Thank you, sir. Gentlemen in the back, another be the last comment.
Your head, Stanisro, I have a question on, is one on, we're surprised that the whole capacity now, and if this is allowed, are you going to one method or another? That, that's real significant consideration as well.
Phil Snyder has an answer for you.
I wondered the same thing, so I went online and said, why storage units? I mean, is that a, I mean, these guys do a business plan, they don't do it just because they want to put up storage units. So I looked online and I put in self-storage units with our zip code, oh, one oh three six. The first two I tapped on, there were twelve different sites within access of our zip code. Not in our zip code, but within access. Out of those twelve different businesses, there were only nineteen available, units available. So apparently, it's a business that, that's and, and the one in Hamden had zero five by fives and zero five by tens, and a couple of tens by tens available, that's it.
I'm just checking something with the. Anything else on the board?
What's it? Jeff, Jefferson.
Well, in your mind, in your, I, I'm looking for your personal management. Stood up and said, not this project.
Name's still in session, please.
Is there any, is it the use that you have an issue with or the business in that area?
You can't hear.
I, I, I'm asking if he's, if his concern with a project going there has to do with the use of self-storage or the way that he perceives they're going to look?
So, both, I've got concerns. Yes, I'm about self-storage, what my concerns were there, and as a business. And because I said, this isn't the right project, product for that location. That project, meaning self-storage. Like that location is not not anything I think the town residents want. And it's not the character, it doesn't indeed character the town. That, that anybody is going to come to move into. So that, that's going to shut, it's going to destroy the character. That I can't say it in simple words. And I'm not against self-storage.
Right.
There.
Yeah, I'm just trying to figure out, is it the way they look, or is there some look that would go along with those buildings that would make it more acceptable?
No, because they have to be secure. It has to be a secure place for anybody to store. They have to keep kids out, they have to keep animals out. And when you have fences, barbed wire, it's not attractive. And that, you know, that's just one point. So to your question, that's exactly what I tell you, right off the cuff.
I have, I'm going to follow on to the question. So what would be, obviously, we're against, I'm saying, with the number of people here, because your concerns are, you're saying the self-storage doesn't belong.
Correct.
Okay. So what if I was to put.
Give them a please.
Hold it, hold it.
Time out.
John, 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 I'll take that.
Thank you.
No interrupting speakers, I said that at the beginning. Respectful of other people, please.
So if I was to put a professional building in here, would that be an acceptable use? You don't need, your counselor's going to tell you, don't, don't answer this.
I'm asking, I'm asking you to be able to answer that.
Okay.
And I think one of the.
I grant you permission.
One of the, one of the issues here is the extent of use. I mean, if, if you look at the use, the property bounds are here and here. They are complete, complete, and then, and, and when you couple all of this together, it creates something in addition to the character, and the character is, is one thing in terms of the look of the business and the feel of the, of the neighborhood around it. Again, we're only talking about this one, I understand your concern is, well, are we trying to prohibit any business from being there? No, it's own business, but if you had a certain constrained area, it provided sufficient buffer, so it wasn't an obvious eyesore. That would, I believe, would address the concerns, and that's not, that's not capable of being done with a self-storage unit, because it requires the business itself, requires maximum use of the landscape in order to be able to do that. And the effect of that is impervious surface that drives water towards the air.
So, so it's really, what's the root cause? Is it the impervious surface or the concerns of the water? Or is it the use of the land, meaning that you don't like the storage? Because if I was to put, which people probably would say, oh yeah, I'm okay with a professional building, but you'd still have the same amount of impervious surface to deal with.
Not necessarily, because a professional business, a professional business that presented this same plan would still have the massive water, stormwater management and recharge.
Exactly.
Which would, which would require them to constrain the size of the building and the associated aspects of it.
But then it makes it probably a non-viable option for somebody.
That, that may be, but, but that's not.
But that's not, I, I understand.
That's, that's, that's not what we're, what we're talking about here. We're talking about this particular project, the extent of this use. And so we can have, we can have a discussion about what other uses it might be put to, but that's beyond the scope of what we're dealing with.
And I want to get a brief from the public.
That's what I want. And I'll sit down and let them.
You know, I, I see a bunch of hands, if, if somebody starts talking and it's repetitive, I'm going to have you sit right down.
So you don't need to choose just for one reason, right?
Okay.
The front.
My name is Mary Hamel. I live in town. A lot of years. And I'm not familiar with the way you look. And anybody show us a picture of what the units are going to look like?
That's available someplace.
I'm sorry, what?
Well, there are units like this in the area.
No, but what are these units?
Look like the ones in these areas. There's one in Wilbraham, I know that piece is.
One with separate. I can certainly.
The next.
I've seen other.
Okay, that's repetitive, thank you. If it's repetitive, I'm not going to listen to it. I'm not going to listen anymore about repetitive testimony, you've had enough.
I'm playing him and that, and I, I hope this is not repetitive, but this addresses your question as to what, what are our issues? So I have been here since nineteen eighty-three, when I came, there was no business. There was no month and savings, there was not a Polish National Park, there was not a Volvo and H, there was not a Greens Valley preschool, there was not Craig the Barber. All, so all of that was farmland at that time. We have supported businesses that are appropriate in this rural town. That's what we want. We understand that someone's trying to sell this property, we do not want to stop the sale of this property. But what we want to do is ensure the character, the rural character of this town, and that you all as a planning board support us in our desire to keep this rural nature, but not to stop business. We would be okay with some business in that area.
Okay, thank you. That completes the testimony for today, no, that completes the testimony for the evening. All right, this hearing is being defended with, with, we requested a board from the eighteenth of August at five o'clock. Is everybody okay with that, the board? At six o'clock.
You're here on respectfully, I, I've got free range travel, I won't be here on the eighteen, I know that.
Hold it, hold it, we're not done yet, please keep it down. How about, how about, how about another line of the week?
I mean, there's, there's another project being discussed on the eleventh. I can be here that day.
We're not going to do it on that one.
Okay, I'll, I'll be back after the twenty-fifth. If we can put it off, until after I get back, I would appreciate that.
The twenty-fifth, after the twenty-fifth?
Yes.
We usually meet on the twenty-fifth, that's a Wednesday, so now we're talking into September?
We'll be available.
Oh, I'll be available September.
Twenty-fifth?
No, that's when I'm coming back, I'm coming back from Alaska.
Hold on, I'll give you a date, hold on. So, September seventh, that's the Labor Day, Wednesday after Labor Day.
Is that okay with the boards?
Well, that's the first Wednesday, that's the first Wednesday of the month, that's it.
So the first is the first day of August, the second is the second, so you're down to September, right?
No. I'm on the wrong month, I'm sorry. So you have the ninth. Am I going blind or what? It says Wednesday, the ninth, go by your calendar. Okay, that's. No, I mean, September twenty-one.
All right. September eighth, sixth.
September eighth at six o'clock.
September eighth.
I'll take a motion to continue to September eighth at six o'clock. Seconded? All those who favor this, this hearing is now continued to September eighth at six o'clock. And please remove, put your chairs back if you could please, to save everybody some time.
Thank you, sir. Whatever politics represent in place. Billy. Oh, I'm just, I'm just, I'm just apologizing for having to push it off until I can be here. You don't want to give up the strength of Alaska to the. Stay here, I'll go with your weapon. I'll be on the fourth order, yeah, so will I. CJ, Mr. Jerry for me? For us to hear the first five.